Okay, good evening. I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Pickle City Schools Board of Education. It is Thursday, October 19th. If everyone would please stand and join me in our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Mr. Hiddle, could you please call roll?
Mr. Mitchell.
Here.
Mr. Frazier.
Here.
Mr. Bostic.
Here.
Mr. Ford.
Here.
Mrs. Nickmacken.
Here. All right, after reviewing our minutes from September, if there are no changes to be made, can I get a motion to approve those?
So move.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved. And same goes with tonight's agenda. If there are no changes to be made there, can I get a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And Mr. Bostic, do you have an Upper Valley Career Center update?
We do not meet until Monday.
Okay, we're just gonna miss it.
I have a couple things I could share. One is they have the partnership with the German exchange students where they go back and forth. They take turns going to each other's companies to learn about manufacturing. So we do have some German students that will be coming to stay with some of our families. And they'll be here learning about not only our manufacturing but our school system. So that's coming up. And the other thing is Andy Hyatt, who was a former board member here, is on their board. He was one of our representatives. His term is up there. He has asked if he could do it again. They're interested in having him. I just wanted to check with you all, are you okay with him continuing to fill that role?
Of course.
Or any of you dying to have that opportunity? It's all good? Okay.
Yeah.
So we're gonna go ahead and point him. We'll do that in January when we do all of our restructuring. So, all right? Very good.
Okay, thank you. And nobody here from the public to speak on any agenda items. So, Mr. Hiddle, we can move along to the treasurer's agenda.
Good evening. Are there any questions about fiscal reports that were attached? The district is on track, it's still in the year in the black. Financially, everything is good at the moment. I will say however, as there always is, there's another fun thing happening. And that is currently, our district is at the 20 mil floor. And I don't want to get way into the weeds about this, but just know that there's a minimum amount that's been established by the state of Ohio that we collect in property taxes. And so they're talking about moving that 20 mil floor down to, could be 18, 15. Who knows what that ends up being? And so that could be a catastrophic loss if something like that were to occur. The auditors have asked for some other ways of doing that. We're asking obviously for other ways of doing that. We're still working through that process. They were trying to speed something through and then they came to their senses for a while and realized that it's a bigger problem than what they can just quickly pound through. But it is a massive concern because it would turn a lot of districts into fiscally responsible to fiscal emergency. So it's just something to keep in mind. Districts that have 20 mil floor had a different structure set up for how they were funding their school districts. And it will have a massive impact. It's like half the districts in Ohio are in that situation. So all that's happening because property values are going through the roof and people are starting to get taxed out of their homes. And that's not okay, especially when you talk about senior citizens on fixed income. So I'm also cognizant of that, that that's an issue. But then there's ways to address that by potentially expanding your homestead exemptions and things like that for seniors and people on fixed income, those kind of things. There's different ways to do it. So we'll see how it goes, but it's just something that there was a House bill and a companion bill in the Senate to do that. So something to keep an eye on. So fiscally sound at the moment, but just something that we need to keep an eye on. All of the districts in Miami County are at the 20 mil floor. I think it sent my mill. So it would impact pretty much the entire county. And then the second thing I have on here tonight is the first resolution to approve using the alternate tax budget for fiscal year '25. And we're starting that process. And again, we submit this information, the major part of it is just to make sure we're collecting enough money to pay our debt. Again, because we're at the 20 mil floor. Otherwise, they use that information to set the military. But because we're at the 20 mil floor, it's not as important as just making sure we're collecting enough money to pay for the new buildings. So that's the only two things that I have tonight. Unless you guys have any questions?
Okay, can I get a motion to approve Mr. Hiddle's agenda?
So move.
Second.
Okay, please call roll.
Mr. Mitchell.
Aye.
Mr. Frazier.
Aye.
Mr. Bostic.
Aye.
Mr. Ford.
Aye.
Mrs. Nickmacken.
Aye. The treasurer's agenda has been approved. Moving on to our superintendent's report.
Thank you. One of the things we have on here is an introduction of our Pickle Education Foundation new director, Danielle Blevins. I'm gonna go ahead and let her go first. That way, if she wants to leave, she can do that and wouldn't have to say. So Danielle, if you wouldn't mind coming up to the microphone up there so the audience at home can hear, tell us a little bit about yourself and some of the work that the foundation is doing. Not to steal her thunder, but our foundation is really tremendous. There's not one like it in this area for a district our size in particular. So what they do for us is amazing. It's a great partnership. So glad to have you on board.
Thanks. I joined the organization in January of this year. We offer funding via support programs, which are education grants to our teachers and staff at Pickle City Schools and scholarships to Pickle High School graduates. We just ran the Pickle Staff Scholarship that some of you might have participated in. We raised $3,770 this year for that. So that was really exciting. This year's recipient was Haley Finchrock, going to participate in interior design. And yeah, we are looking forward to continuing to do that this year.
Do you remember how many dollars we gave out last year for scholarships?
It was over $400,000 this year for scholarships.
It's incredible. It really is. And the number she just gave was all staff donations. So our staff continues to sponsor scholarships every year for students. So it's a great feat that our staff contributes to. Any questions for Danielle while she's here? Well, thank you for entertaining yourself.
Yes, thank you, thank you.
And you're welcome to stay. Or if you'd like to go, you're welcome to dance off too. Yeah, thanks.
Thanks, Danielle.
We're in our second month of school and I just thought it was a good time to talk a little bit about the building goals that we have now that they've gotten those established and they're into that work. So Ross, Heather, either of you wanna step up and, or you wanna go together?
Right there.
Okay, on a tag team.
Good evening, everyone. So yeah, our building goals this year, we went through science and reading training to start the school year out. There's a big shift happening. So our first goal is essentially getting 100% of kids on grade level for ELA. So we have a few ways that we're gonna measure that through our assessments, but what we wanna specifically do as a staff is use what's called the I do, we do, you do model that focuses on explicit instruction. So it's basically the teacher's doing some, doing a mini lesson, a lot of modeling happening with that, interacting with the students. And the students are gonna do a lot of guided practice where they're gonna get to work as groups, the teacher isn't still facilitator, and then they're gonna apply their skills independently. So it's kinda the explicit part and how that all of our lessons are set up in the building. So that's one of our big ones. We're gonna use science and reading research strategy, specific evidence-based strategies to help grow our kids and meet that goal. And then we're gonna, everything we're doing is focused on on grade level or above. So I always talk to Mr. Thompson about the bar is here, we wanna teach to the bar, not teach down to the bar. So we're really working with our staff on making sure everything we do rigor-wise is at least on a grade level or above. And depending on what our data does, we'll scaffold one instruction from that point. So goal number two is really focused around our PACs, and that's being peaceful, productive, healthy, and happiness that creates positive climate of openness, respect, and care. And what that essentially means is we want kids to wanna come to school, be a part of a team. PACs uses a lot of what are called kernels that teach, their teaching strategies basically that help build collaboration, self-awareness, and some of those skills amongst the students. So we wanna do that, so we're gonna use PACs consistently. We're gonna reinforce positives using what are called tools. We also teach the zones of regulations. So we have a lot going on there, but ultimately we wanna get 100% of kids using those kernels and S D L behavior in a great place. We want kids on grade level for reading and writing.
So at Washington, we have very similar goals and we're working in tandem a lot, having regular conversations and our teachers are as well, which is pretty exciting. But our building leadership team, in addition to the I do, we do, you do strategy, which we're all doing, we're really focusing on how we're using our ELA coaches this year. So every English Language Arts, every reading teacher is doing what's called a round with our coaches so that we're ensuring the use of those evidence-based strategies in our classrooms. And then in addition, we're both doing the blitz model, which is what we're calling our intervention time. But we're using our data to not only intervene with those students who might be struggling, but making sure we're extending those students at the top. So we've grouped all of our students so that those kids who are already on grade level are being challenged even more. And so we're making sure we're meeting all of those needs. Our second goal, in addition to that 100% of our students will be on grade level for reading, is focused on our climate, which for us at Washington, we're maintaining that focus on 100% of our students demonstrating respectful, responsible, and kind behaviors. So our R K is our PBIS plan. We also are using PACs to integrate within that. And we're focusing on those things like our pride card counts and our PBIS tiered instruction with our students this year.
Any questions for them?
How's your school year going so far since you're, you know, you're brand new?
I am learning a lot. It is going well. It is going well. The teachers are fabulous, the kids are wonderful, families are great. We've had a great start. We had our first round of conferences, so that was exciting to get to meet with families. And we're looking forward to our next round of conferences coming up.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you, guys.
Just a quick review, when test scores have come out of the last couple years since COVID, if I remember correctly, I think 40% of the state third graders are now passing that test or at reading levels. So the governor really took some strong action last year and brought in what he's called the science of reading, which is a strong focus on phonics. There are other things to it, but a real strong focus to that. And there is an insurance, that assurance that all school districts will follow those methods to try to get kids back on track. So all of our K through three teachers went through that training this summer. It was three grueling days of really a strong blitz. And they have a lot of the skills already in place. We were already implementing a lot of it, but just kinda re-getting that going, restarting it, and really focusing on just sharpening that up. So a lot of really intense kinds of things that they had to do. So the goals that they set really supports that work. So I appreciate you guys sharing that. Heath from Pickle Central?
Yeah, so our first goal, our building goal is every one of our 706 students that we have enrolled right now, 100% of them will feel like they have at least one adult to go to. We feel it's very important for our kids, especially as they go through fourth, fifth, and sixth grade, to feel like they have at least that one person to go to. And go to not only to, if they need something, but also that one person they feel they can go to to celebrate all their successes. In order to do that, we're really working hard to build and maintain relationships with all our students. One of the things we've challenged our staff to, we've used the phrase, spend time with kids when you don't have to, which means, you know, during your lunch, we encourage our teachers during their lunches, during their plan, during before school or after school, just to spend five to 10 minutes with kids. I think we all can sit in this room and remember an educator that probably spent time when they didn't have to for us. So we wanna make sure all our 706 students have that one person to go to. Our goal number two is aligned with Spring Creek and Washington. We want 100% of our students on grade level, knowing that to do that, we need to engage our students. We were coming off the age of COVID and a lot of technology and what we found, and this is student feedback data, they're kinda burnt out about that. They want adult interaction, they wanna be taught, they wanna work together. They were lacking those skills. And so really working on those collaborative skills, really encouraging our staff and challenging our staff to provide great engaging instruction, that explicit instruction, using the same model as they're using in the primaries of that I do, we do, you do. We've also incorporated our blitz periods as well to get those kids that are lacking in those skills up to where they need to be. But at the core of it, really engaging students, getting them excited about their learning through that adult interaction. So those are our two building goals at Pickle Central. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Clark from Pickle Central, Pickle Junior High School.
It's gonna probably start to sound familiar, like a broken record, but same thing at Pickle Junior High School. Our first goal is that focus on making sure 100% of our students are meeting grade level standards. Teachers are doing great work with that. They've built in their own goals, their own personal goals to help us meet that goal as a staff. As an example, our eighth grade math team just met this week and we break our standards into chunks and we will pre-test and post-test between or before and after the instruction that they get over maybe a couple weeks' time. And we knew where our students were with this particular standard before they even learned it. And then, so they pre-tested and I think it was roughly 40-some percent were at grade level standard even before we taught it. And then we were at 87% after instruction. So we knew where we started, we knew where we ended, and now we know who we need to target to get them, to get to that 100%. So really getting targeted with that. Our second goal is making sure our students feel that engagement like Heath was talking about. Our student survey data last year came back that that's where, if we're lacking, that's where students feel like things are lacking. They wanna feel that sense of engagement. So really working with our PBIS program to reach out to kids and really make them feel welcome and engaged at school. The instructional piece is part of it, but also the social-emotional part of that and what we can do to impact that. So teachers have built goals individually for things that they're gonna do individually to try to really impact that. So those are our two goals. Any questions?
Mr. Messick, Pickle High School. Jeff?
Yeah, we're gonna be kinda echo and like everything else. So I'll take you back a little bit, take you through a journey here. Was it last February, we put out a student survey to the kids, basically asking some questions, what makes a good class? And the kids gave us their honest answers and we asked the teachers, what makes a good class? And it was pretty interesting to see that they both wanted the same thing. They wanted to be up, doing things, engaging, and doing whatever. They wanted to be behind Chromebooks, they didn't wanna be doing workbooks, things like that. So that's been pretty much the focus from that point on, bringing it into this year. We, like I said, we want the student engagement piece. Now, the problem is, is what does student engagement look like? Are we talking about just putting kids together so they can work on something? Or actually truly having them have conversations about the content? That's what we want. And that's what we worked through with the teachers in our PD days and talked about getting the Chromebook closed, all right? Getting kids up, move, do things with them, you know? So we've started to see quite a transformation here at Pickle High School. I met with my student advisory today and earlier last month to get a deal or a report. Obviously, we're out walking around and seeing it, but what I see also, I wanna know what the kids are saying, and we're getting great feedback. They're like, yeah, we're not seeing the Chromebooks. I don't even get them out. So we're not gonna buy anymore.
That is fantastic.
All right.
Eric and I are happy to apply.
We're a trade meant for advocates. But anyway. But anyway, and like I said, it really stemmed from what our students asked us to do. And it really made us take a hard look at what we're doing. So that is our number one goal. The, and we're still working. We know that's gonna be a three, four, or five-year process. We're gonna, I told my staff that. This is something that we're gonna continually to work on all the time to look at different ways that we can get students engaged within the classroom, get them talking. It's, and then like I said, it's been, it's been good. It's been really good. Going to a math class and just hear kids sharing math concepts. They're not just talking about TikTok, you know? They're talking about congruent angles and showing each other how to do work. And it's, it's been really good to see. So that's where we're at Pickle High. Good?
Can you share a little bit about your involvement fair too? Because I think that was a really good piece that came out of some of the student feedback.
The involvement fair from last spring, you said?
Yeah.
Yeah. So that was the other thing is just, especially with the eighth graders coming in to be the freshmen, knowing what's out there, you know? What we have at Pickle High School. So we invited them all up. We had all the teams, all the clubs represented. The kids came out and got a chance to meet with those kids and just let them know that we got these things here at Pickle High School. The kids did a great job inviting the kids into the programs. And I just, I briefly, a couple things I did notice, and we did see, Cross Country Team is huge now. It's like a whole freaking flock of geese. But, but you know, even our esports has doubled. You know, some of these, all our programs are going, the clubs, gardening club is doubled, you know? And I think it is, and it's all the young kids coming into them. So silly for us to not figure that out over there. Thanks again to the kids to say we didn't know what was here. Good? Good?
Stay there, if you could. I'll introduce the next topic. Just in summer, you can see a lot of the feedback that kids gave us was really important to the goals. So that was one of our focuses as a group here of the last couple years was listening to our kids because coming out of COVID, it was getting hard to get, get things back going. So it's really good to see those threads go through the district on what the kids have shared. So I appreciate all of you sharing that. I asked Rob to stay up there because we, just one last thing to share. We had our manufacturing week this week and it's a partnership we have with the Chamber. And one of the goals is not only to expose our kids to different manufacturing kinds of jobs, but to, for those kids that wanna stay here in our community and really come out into the workforce, where are those places that they can go? Because a lot of kids truly don't know all those different places and what they do. So getting them into the buildings and experiencing that is really a key piece to do that. So Rob helps lead that up. He's on that committee with me and several other people. So I thought maybe you could share a little bit about some of the success this week that you saw, or maybe some things kids have to do or said.
So we've had some of our usual partners. This year actually was a little bit tamed down from last year. A lot of the companies had to back out because they didn't have enough people, because they have to hire a lot of people. It's a big commitment for them and I appreciate them giving our kids the opportunity. But the whole idea is we take the kids out, we get an opportunity to do a tour. And one of the big things that we're really focusing on is the multiple jobs that are in Pickle, right? We don't want to lose talent, Pickle talent to other places. We're trying to, we want them to retain here, right? We want these people to come work for us or in Pickle. And so I think that's the big thing is we really get, you know, we get this mindset of what manufacturing is and kids don't understand that it's robotics, it's engineering, it's logistics, it's marketing, it's all of those things. Yes, there is machine operation, but there's also a lot of jobs that go in there. So we wanted to make sure the kids could expose that. And the manufacturers do an excellent job of sharing that out there. And the kids always wanna know, you know, obviously they wanna know how much you get paid to work here. That's one of the big things. And I tell you, the Scott Steel, the guy from Scott Steel today, he goes, you know, we'll pay you what you want, or what you're worth, or whatever kind of thing, goes, but it's real simple. You gotta come to work. If you come to work, we'll pay you, pay you, pay you. And it's just like, I'm just, I'm ready to run high-fiving and feeling like, yeah, yeah, I know that. Get in here. So anyway, it's not like, you know, that's, and just hearing the struggles that they're having, the same, you know, some of the same stuff that we're going through, kinda stuff, and just getting that message to the kids, I think was, it was great. We actually, when I left the last tour, I had two kids approach me and said, that's the guy who I'm gonna work for. You know, he was just full of energy and all that, so it was really good. Anyway, it's good, we went to Wynans, Crane Pumps, yeah, Wynans is the good tour. Crane Pumps.
I had French Oil, Wynans, Crane, Scott Steel, Miami Valley Steel, IDC Spring, and even Flo.
Yeah.
And we typically have more manufacturing places volunteer to do it than we can actually fill spots with kids. And the Career Center joins us with this too. So it's always nice that there's more people that wanna do it than can because the next year we can swap some people out. So when students repeat the experience, they're not seeing the same places.
And that's what we were cameraing into, is we did a lot more last year and it was getting, started getting too repetitive, so we had to break it down a little bit.
I was just thinking, when you said that there were kids saying that I wanna work for that guy because of his enthusiasm.
Yes.
How about we have teachers, kids go, I wanna learn because that guy has a lot of enthusiasm. That's what you all been saying. Like you just saw, there was another example outside of the classroom with the same exact thing, with that same exact thing.
There is, and the other side of it is, Jeremy, is we went to one tour one time, this was last year, and they were, the people, everybody wanted to work for that guy because they had a slushy machine in the classroom.
A slushy machine.
How do we give adults the job? We feed them.
I'm sorry.
Are you having good luck with attendance so far, or is it kinda the same?
Staff attendance has been better, so that part's been, has been good. Student attendance is not where it used to be. I don't know how, you walk into a classroom and our teachers deal it, you know, they walk in, it's like, it's hard to teach this, you know, whatever. I have three, five attendances a class today, you know, a freshman class is really, usually that's the strongest group. We're not, we're not very strong this year, so. But the seniors are doing well this year, so.
Shift there, huh?
Yeah, but we're, we're know where we need to be. So, yeah.
Darn. I was hoping you were gonna say, it's so good. This year's so much better.
I know, I know. I wanna say, it depends on the group, all right? Yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Still working.
Yep.
What about everybody's new staff? Are they all doing great?
Very good.
Yeah.
All acclimated? Yeah? So they're in good additions?
Yes.
For the students?
Yeah, I had one kid actually come up to me, unless you have one of our new staff and comes up to me and says, I'm so glad you hired her, you know?
Oh, that's good.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I said, no, just a lion's heart.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Messick. Brayden, you are in cross-country. He just mentioned how great they're doing and they're really doing a great job. You wanna give a quick update on just how cross-country's doing and how you feel about that?
Yeah, the cross-country team's doing really, really good. This is the best team we've had in a really long time.
Yeah.
Saturdays are district meet down in Cedarville. And we have, so it's a big race. There's like 24 teams, if I remember correctly, down there. And the top eight teams, place-wise, will make it out. Right now, we're seeded seven. So like, we're right on the cusp, depending on how it goes down Saturday. We might make it out, we might not, but I'm feeling confident about making it out. Last time the team made it out, like as a team and districts, was 1974.
Oh, wow.
Wow.
So it's the best team we've had in a really long time.
That's so exciting.
It's a fun team to watch too. They're really just a fun group of people, yeah. Great.
Actually, it's a good time. Shout out, Ryan King, NBA Allcross Country, guys coached the year.
Yeah. Very nice.
He's awesome.
Well, thank you for sharing that. Well, thank you for sharing that. That's it for me.
Congratulations. I hope you guys all do well.
Thank you.
You already have, so. Okay, thank you, everybody.
Thanks. Principals, you're welcome to go if you'd like.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thanks for your time.
Okay, so moving on to your agenda, Mr. Thompson.
We'd like to recommend the board approval of the attached list of donations and grants to Pickle City School Districts. We had some donations in memory of John Apple, who played football several years ago, actually graduated in my class. We have a memory of Dave Wool, who did quite a bit for baseball youth programs and throughout our city. And then a really nice donation from Bonnie Murray to the Pickle Show Choir, who I got to see practice last night, and I was sharing with Sean. I cannot wait to see this show come together. It's really looking sharp. It's going to be a really good show. So I really appreciate those people and their donations. Recommend board approval of the attached list of library books from Pickle Central School for the disposal and removal from the inventory from Pickle City School District. Same as in the past, sometimes books just wear out, or they're just no longer really being checked out by students. So they have a waiting process they go through by looking at their inventory, and that's what those books are. So that's it.
Alrighty. Can I get a motion to approve the superintendent's agenda?
Second.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the superintendent's agenda is approved.
Thank you.
Mr. Lyons.
Thank you. Short agenda, so there's not a lot there to go through. See some FMLAs. Does anybody have any questions from the update that I sent on any of these? We did add some subs this time, which was really good. We're still looking for one long-term subposition for Washington primary, and it's been a challenge to get somebody to commit to that at long term. So if anybody's looking, we're always, always interested in that. So outside of that, since it's so short, is there any?
What's the pay for a long-term sub again?
We pay $1.60 a day now for any of our subs, actually daily subs. So it's, we've gotten to a point where we're probably the highest in the county at this point, and very competitive even outside of the county, I would say comparatively speaking. Some of the bigger districts were very competitive at that money for subs. So, and it doesn't have to be a licensed teacher.
Twenty bucks an hour.
Yeah, it's pretty good.
How many long-term subs turn into regular teachers? I mean, it's good, it's good for them. You know, it's good for them to get out there and say, hey, this is what I can do.
I think the last one, I think, was last year or two years ago. And she was at Spring Creek Primary, and she's an absolute superstar. And when I talk to them, when I interview them for a long-term position, if they are a licensed teacher, it's a tryout. I mean, that's what it is. And then we always guarantee them an interview. So if there's an opening, so it happens.
In that case, the staff came and said.
Yeah, they, they pretty much.
Get this person, yeah.
They said she's, and she is. She's phenomenal for kids. But that's really the ideal situation. If you can catch somebody just coming out of college and didn't get a job, so kind of start there. Some of the positions are more challenging than others, so it takes a special kind of approach. And people kind of hesitate a little bit on some of those. So, but we're working on it. So if you know anybody, welcome to send them my way.
Now, is this long-term sub? Is it the building sub? Like, they would fill in for anyone, or is it for a certain?
No. This is actually a position. It's for an intervention specialist that's going to be out through March. I believe it's March.
Right. Yes.
Yeah.
Correct.
On leave. So it would be, and in an IS position, you could be doing something unique and different every single day at a Washington primary. But it's guaranteed to have work every day through March, too. And they've got a super team out there working with some of our highest-needs children, so. Got a couple more interviews, so we'll see what happens. But sure, send people my way.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. No other questions? Can I get a motion to approve the personnel agenda?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Hiddle, please call Rome. I guess we don't need to, since there's no hiring, right? Correct? Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Motion carries, and the personnel agenda is approved. And nobody here to speak on non-agenda items either. So we are looking at our next regular board meeting to take place here on November 16th. And with that said, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, anyone opposed? Motion carries, and tonight's meeting is adjourned.